Turn your microphone on. We'll go ahead and get started. Two of the commissioners are at another meeting. They'll be here shortly. We'll begin with the public communication. Each speaker will have three minutes. We ask that you be respectful in your remarks and say what's on your mind. Any comments?
This is on for the agenda for changing the meeting to nine o'clock. I was just wondering if was there, I mean, I understand we're still under COVID and that's what originally started, the six P M. Change, but I think that you get more of a turnout and everybody gets to hear the discussion up on the board if we leave it at six.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Loved you. Good evening. My name is Todd Patterson. I have been a resident of Goliad for the past seven years. On November thirtieth, a special meeting was held to inform the people of Goliad County what happened during our early voting this this year. On October thirteenth, a simple error occurred while using the electronic voter log. The next morning, the mistake was discovered and the worker informed the county clerk, Mary Ellen Flores. The county clerk's reaction to this error is why I'm speaking here tonight. On October fourteenth, the county clerk contacted the elections division at the Secretary of State for advice on the error. Ms. Flores stated the S O S told her to keep this information hidden to avoid people involved from voting twice. We now know that is a lie. The S O S correspondent relating to the contact with the county clerk was as follows. Notify party chairs as their candidate may have a right to an election contest. Contact all entities for which they were holding the election, which means your commissioners, school board, city council, et cetera. As they may have a right to an election contest. Notify the judge and the county attorney. Submit a memo to the Secretary of State regarding the error. This took the county clerk over a month to submit, yet the worker who made the error had a written statement in two days. After your contact with the Secretary of State, the only person you notified per your own admission was the county attorney. It was not until things were posted on social media around November eighteenth that the citizens and officials became aware of the voting log error. You have stated that you did not know about the meeting on November thirtieth about the voting irregularities, yet it is the county clerk's office that posted the agenda on November nineteenth. You also stated you had a recount for the city that day. The recount had ended at three forty-five. The new mayor, who was involved in the recount, had plenty of time to make the meeting, as I believe you did also, but chose not to. I would also like to note that I saw the county attorney before the meeting in the courthouse area, but he chose not to attend either. It appears to me, as I'm sure it does to others, the only guidelines you chose to follow was to contact the county attorney. The guidelines that stated immediate full transparency obviously do not apply to you or the county attorney. So more than a month after the S O S gave you guidelines to follow, you still had not done it. That is until social media let the cat out of the bag. During the commissioner's court meeting on November ninth, yet again, the county clerk and the county attorney both failed Goliad County. You were both well aware of the S O S guidance on the election error, yet never said a word. You let the canvas go on knowing full well of the error made during early voting. By doing such, both of you had denied any and all candidates of due process and of their civil rights. You both should be ashamed of yourselves as representatives of this county. By the county clerk's own admission, she has repeatedly said the state told her not to say anything. We now know you are not being truthful. The S O S specifically told you not to conceal the error, and yet you chose to completely ignore them. A simple mistake by an election worker could have easily been resolved with honesty and integrity by the county clerk and the county attorney. A hand recount to alleviate any fears that my vote didn't count and to also satisfy the questions by candidates could have easily be done on November fourth. Ms. Flores, Mr. Biomonte, it is your duty as elected officials to be honest, trustworthy, and transparent. You purposely withheld information from your peers, denied candidates their due process, and lied to the voters of Goliad County. It is in closing that I respectfully ask that Mary Ellen Flores, county clerk, and Rob Biomonte, county attorney, submit your resignations. Your actions, as well as your disrespect to elected officials and lies to the good citizens of Goliad County are inexcusable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
In reference to the change in the commissioner's meeting to nine A M., I prefer to leave it in the evenings. I'm much more able to be here in the evenings and I enjoy being a part of the process. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we will move to the consent agenda. Pullouts, page fourteen, Commissioner Bruins, four hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-five cents, motion to approve, please.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye abstain.
Motion carries. Goliad Auto Parts on page seventeen. Two thousand, two hundred and four dollars and sixty-three cents. Motion to approve, please.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye abstain.
Motion carries. Page eighteen, Commissioner Edwards, six hundred and ninety dollars, motion to approve, please.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
Page twenty-two, Commissioner Morales, three hundred and forty-six dollars and fifteen cents, motion to approve, please.
So move.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Opposed?
One abstention.
Motion carries. The remainder of the consent agenda, any questions or discussion? If not, need a motion to approve, please.
I have a question on page thirteen, the blue sky promotions. For the disposable protective gowns, is that for the EMS or?
It's going to be for EMS or the sheriff's office, one of the two, yes. And it's my understanding that all these, all that protective equipment is being bought through the COVID grants at no expense to the county.
Is that correct?
Well, I see it's coded to something else.
Sir?
It's coded to, and I didn't check it, but it's not, it's not to that. It's sixty-two, one sixty-two, five hundred. Okay.
Oh, we need to pay the bills, don't you think?
We need to pay the bills.
So you said it's coming out of COVID funding CARES Act? Ultimately, or did it come out of that?
He said he wasn't sure. He had to go check.
You had to go check? You're not sure if it? Okay.
There's possibility it could have been miscoded, but I'm sure he's more than willing to code it correctly.
Okay, we need to check, I guess, check into that and see if it's coded correctly, if it comes out of the CARES Act. Sir? What was it?
The amount?
Page thirteen, you said?
Yeah, page thirteen.
Dollar amount.
Five thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars. It says for FDA-approved disposable protective gowns.
Sheriff's Office then. The sheriff's office and the. Okay. Check into it, would you? Can you go over and do that now and we'll set the approval of the consent agenda off till you get back?
Well, we can approve the rest of it minus that if you want.
Okay, let's do that.
You want to leave that one out?
Yeah. Got another one.
Motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the line item Commissioner.
Wait a minute, I've got another question.
I'm sorry.
I thought he said he had another one beside that one.
There's only one, right?
I've got another one on page eighteen.
Okay.
Langford, Langford Community Management. It's a buyout contract for twenty-eight thousand, five hundred.
That's a, that is a G L O grant in regard to the flooding.
Buyouts.
If we had any, it's a buyout. And I think we have one person applying. That's what that money is for.
And that's, that's going to come out of that grant money?
It'll come, no sir, it'll come out of the, it's a buyout program by the general land office for flooding. They offered it countywide and I think we have, I think we have one taker.
To sell his property? Or hers?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve everything but the disputed item in question?
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the retaining agreement for Allison Bass McGee in regard to the Solar Prime tax abatement. They're all teed up. They're ready to go. We'll get our second solar facility in the county. It's the same deal that we had before. The entity that is putting the solar facility in will pay those expenses. Last time they were eleven thousand dollars, I think, and Cap Rock paid that. Solar Prime will be on the same, it's the same deal. It's written into the contract.
So this is second unit is coming in?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I had a discussion with Mr. Bass, one of the named partners that the county is trying to retain pertaining to this tax abatement. Excuse me. And I asked that we have some additional language in there, and he said, go ahead and put it in there. Because I felt like this agreement talked about general consultation. And I thought it was for a specific purpose. It wasn't to where people could call the Bass company, commissioners or judges, call the Bass company and run up legal fees. So he agreed to do that, and so I have a contract where I delineated it. It's been faxed to him. He says he will type in a new one and send it to us, but we can approve this one and have it initialed.
That was for, that's for a separate retainer agreement, Mr. Biomonte. This is on the solar, as I mentioned to begin with. The separate agreement from Allison Bass to retain them for civil matters and the economic development. A major mill I'm working with, these are two separate agreements.
I know, that's on agenda item number ten. I'm talking about item, agenda item number three.
Right, okay.
Okay, I had a discussion with Mr. Bass and the abatement. That's the one we're talking about today.
Okay.
And he's agreed to have my language put in the contract.
Okay.
Okay, that's what I'm telling you.
Well, I can't understand you very well with your diaper in front of your mouth. I'm sorry. So I.
Well, that's.
Okay, so what is your recommendation, sir?
My recommendation is that we approve this agreement and you initial it, you initial the addition on page one.
Okay. Need a motion to approve this, please? Second?
I'll just add to, that this, make it clarify that this is going to go for that solar abatement, tax abatement issues only.
That's correct.
Correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Hundred percent.
Would you accept that amendment? Commission?
Yeah.
The change?
Whose property is this one supposedly gonna, did y'all, whose property was this one going on?
It's out on twenty-four forty-one.
Okay.
Way out there.
Harkins? That's the one on Harkins? That's not.
Do we have a second, do we have a second on this yet?
I think Landos.
All in favor?
When I had with the amendment, I was asking Commissioner Precinct Three if he was fine with that amendment.
Right, making a motion to amend it to accept the new.
That it's for tax, tax abatement issues?
Right.
Only. Because that's what, that's what it is.
He's good with it.
Okay, good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion action to get a double wide mobile home for EMS, Commissioner Bruins?
Yes, I believe they put some pictures together of, they're living in a single wide trailer right now. The, it was supposed to be a six-month fix when they were moved out of the EMS building for mold reasons. But it's all, it's going on, what, two years, I believe? And they did have some problems with the virus, keeping their distance between each other. The, one of the bedrooms is an office, the back and the front bedroom are, are bedrooms, and then some of them are sleeping in the living room. And some are sleeping in the kitchen because of the, because of the virus to keep apart. If we're not going to get them a facility real soon, then I think we need to, to upgrade to at least a double wide or. If we tried to rent a house, I think they wouldn't have the, the area to park their equipment, their. Their deal, oh, my battery went dead. So anyway, you can look at the pictures and this is what they're, they're living in, so. They're washing their clothes in Precinct One's office. And anyway, I just thought we need to do something to change this.
Did we, Judge, did we check anything on CARES Act money to maybe, did we check anything for monies from the CARES Act to help with this such process?
I think we have spent all of the, we've used all the money that we allotted.
Okay.
Through payroll, that ate up a lot, EMS.
This was that grant y'all were talking about, or the COVID grant?
Right.
Okay.
So we have, we've used up the extent of that. I thought about that, thought that'd be an excellent use for it. But we use the money one way or the other, so the, the whole idea was to use it all regardless. That's what, that's what we did.
Okay, and second question, have you heard anything from our G L O people on that?
I've put in, I've put in a request and I have not got the answer back yet. Everybody's working slow. So, just, so what we have here is we have a, we have a need for more space in EMS.
Right.
And Commissioner Morales was with me when we had a phone call to the, with the G L O. There's another grant coming after the first of the year that we'll be able to apply for. And we're being told, we don't know that it's gospel, but we, we're being told that we can build a EMS backslash fire station with those dollars. And it has to be located in a low to moderate income area, so the property by the school will not work. They got the rules, it's the golden rule, the one with the gold rules. They've got the gold. So I'm hopeful that that's going to happen. Would I bet my life on it? No, but we're being told it is.
So that, that one is coming out mid, or January sometime?
Yes, sir.
Or let, let the monies, or see the monies are available or not?
Right. You know, rather than building another and tearing up everything that's been done over there. If you rented a, if you rented a house and kept the second crew over there, when the first crew went out, then they could go back to the main, main space.
Any, anything to give them some space, some, you know, maybe when the virus deal is over, that would be sufficient, what they have, but there again, they're not. They can't hardly put two people in one room, in other words.
Time you go out for bids and through the bidding process will be way in the January before that would happen. And I think we're going to know something by then, we can make better decisions. But y'all should tell me what your pleasure is.
Yes.
We have really, really outgrown that. The administrator's office, as you can see, has turned into another bedroom. There is literally this much room for a folded black and white chair, and I have a copy right behind my back right now. There is this much space for me to walk through there. We have really, really outgrown it. We're starting to have some issues because we do have quite a bit of people that are part timers coming into work. Sometimes there's just one female, two, three or four other males, and the bathroom's becoming an issue. I got questioned on that. I've gotten questioned on.
Let me interrupt you in the interest of time. No one is disputing that any more room?
No, I understand. I'm just explaining more that.
And I understand, we all have it, that the, there's a shortage of room there. We understand there's COVID. And when you have one female and three males or vice versa, we, we've got all that. All I'm saying is we think that we have a grant coming to alleviate this problem. And in the meantime, we could probably just rent a house for the second crew, and when the first one went out, they could just go to the headquarters and be done. And this is only a problem during the date, during the nighttime, I assume.
Is, would be a problem, well, we'd just have to see and how you want to work out with the ambulances, because the ambulance has to stay with that second out crew. We shouldn't be driving our personal vehicles responding fast from anywhere, depending where you find a house at in the location also. If you can find it there and close to there, that's fine, but coming, say, from five blocks down, driving your personal vehicle to go get an ambulance.
Well, I don't see, well, that's a real problem because I see y'all at every restaurant and every store in town, so what's the difference of taking it over to the house and when they're sitting there?
We just have to pay, we just have to pay for the plugs to be there and for it to be protected.
That's a no-brainer. It can go where they're going to be stationed, so if they do get a call, they can shoot.
Yeah, that's one, that's why I'm wondering what you want to do in that area.
So it would just take a plug for?
It's an expensive plug. It's, they're very expensive, but yes. It'll take a plug that, to keep the ambulance.
Yeah, yeah, because otherwise you got to keep them running or the generator running.
What's your pleasure?
Well, I, I think if we could find a rent house, that's great. Just something to give them some more room.
I don't think anyone's disputing it. I just think that if we've got something coming, it seems like a little bit drastic to be taking a bath on a single wide and buying a double wide.
And I agree.
And then taking a bath on the double wide when we get into the new place. So let's just slow down just a little bit and see if we can find a rent house. And then we can come back to this.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion that we look for a rent.
David, there's one thing nobody's thought about is those buses have to be plugged in when they're not in service.
That's what she was saying.
Okay, I'm sorry. But, but you know, that was pretty expensive to do that. I'm sorry I made you, I guess you're enjoying this, Mickey, but sometimes I just can't hear in here, and I'm not going to make a secret of it. And y'all can laugh if you want to, but it's not, it's not any fun sitting over here trying to figure out what everybody's saying when they're talking. I always see the back of your head. If you'd speak into this thing, it would help me a lot, and I'm sorry for the outbursts, but my question, my thing is, is those, those buses need to be secure. Where we have them at is not really secure. We've had issues with them getting in it there. So I don't know what's going to happen if we start parking these things in front of a rent house or in front, on the street, and then we've got, got to think about the expense of redoing all those plugs to get them where we can plug them in. I, my, my question is, I wonder what we could, if we could do a trade-in for what we have to a wider. Because we know it's, even if we get the grant January the first, it's probably going to be close to a year before we get it built, you know?
It's going to be a period of time.
Yes, sir. So would it be possible to, to check and see what, what, what the value of the one we have is and apply it to something that would work?
Well, I would encourage that. I thought that we would have, I was assuming that you knew what the amounts were on a double wide and what the single wide was worth before you brought this in here. But laying that aside, that's what needs to happen next, and we'll see where we're at. So if you can give us until the next commissioner's court meeting, Ms. Morales.
And look at houses.
We can come up with a solution that everyone likes.
Thank you, sir.
All right. So need a motion to table this until the next commissioner's court meeting.
Or take no action?
Take no action, okay. Take no action.
Yes, sir.
All in favor? Okay, good. All right. Discussion action to change commissioner's court meeting back to nine o'clock. Before you take off, let me try this. There are one, two, three, four, five court sessions scheduled in this room for the year that we're coming up on. Those five are on the second and fourth Monday.
Right.
So I have a meeting scheduled that I'm going to meet with the judges early next week to see if there's any way to shift these four Monday meetings, five Monday meetings, to another day. Because it's simply not viable for us to meet in that room downstairs. And it would seem like this courtroom does belong to the county of Goliad, and it seemed like we could reserve a regular time. But we've already established as Monday is our date all the way through. So rather than go through that again, I would like to see if they can move those five dates that are scheduled on the second or fourth Monday to another date, because even at one o'clock, like we discussed, they're not through a lot of times. They're still rolling at one o'clock on Monday afternoon and three o'clock, you know? That's the reason we originally scheduled this for six o'clock, neither, after they've went home and there's no conflict. So I will meet with them this coming week and I will get the answer. And if they say they can move it, then we can have it at nine o'clock or whenever you want it on Mondays. I mean, we've heard from some of the citizens that say that they like to be able to come and they've got day jobs. So we need to keep that in mind as well.
Well, and there again, I understand that part, and we had discussed earlier meetings years ago, or later meetings years ago. Now with the audio and the video, a lot of people tell us they, they just watch it and listen to it, and, and they were happy with, with, with that.
The only thing is, it cuts out the, it cuts out their ability to speak publicly, so that.
Well, and, and we hadn't seen a whole lot of that lately.
Right.
Right.
Uh, another deal is, I did check with the surrounding counties, and they all have their meetings that are back at nine o'clock.
Well, they all have considerably larger rooms than we do.
Yes, I agree.
So what I would ask you to do on that is to wait until I get through with this meeting in this coming week, and see if we can get them to shift those, those four dates, five dates, and then we'll, we'll have a clear path to move it to a different time if we want to up here.
You're, and you're meeting with, uh...
I'm meeting with a couple of the district judges.
Okay.
I don't think they're working much right now, or whatever, I'm having a difficult time getting hold to one of them, but I've got a meeting for...
Would you mind if I go with you?
You can?
Uh, well, I mean, I can, I can try to explain our, my reasoning to them, that way they can, I give them my reasons, so, anyway. And I know you, you, you have your reasons, so to...
Well, we just can't meet in a small courtroom.
Right, I understand that. No, I, no, I know that.
So if you look at the, this is, this is the schedule for this year, and it's just, it's full, but I think that we can shift some things around.
Excellent.
Let's, let's try to do that.
Okay, okay.
So we'll take no action on that for now.
Judge, can I ask a question of Andy? So with this audio and video, all this fancy stuff, we can't do the zoom in, you know, you can't zoom, Andy?
There may be a way to do it. He's fixing a microphone.
You deserve that.
Here, you can use, you can use mine here.
There may be a way to do it, I'm not familiar with it, but I think the system can do it. I'll leave it at that. I don't know, I don't know at the moment.
I just wanted to ask a question, that, that's, see if we could, could do it that way or not, because I was, didn't know if we could or not, with, along with the audio and the visual.
Okay. Item number six, discussion, discussion, action, that's not typed right, discussion and action on salary of new EMS director. Commissioner Bruins?
Okay, this is, um, we've got several agenda items on here, uh, Pat Morales, which is doing the administrative work over at the EMS right now, and we've talked to Dr. McNeil, so several of these items are to go forward on hiring a new EMS administrator. So, um, this one's on salary, I guess, so... Pat, do, I mean, do you wanna put anything in on this?
What we have on the salary thing for the, on the budget is fifty-one thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars, and then we have benefits that are added to it, correct? And then we have the benefits that are added to it?
Sure, yes.
Okay, and if I'm not mistaken, I think it is from August that there's not been any administrative money spent?
Well, the money that, that we budgeted for that salary, yeah, none of it has been spent since October first, that should be correct.
I think we've already went through this before. I tried to move money that was in my budget into salary for my employee, and they said you cannot affect a budget moving money into it, so what your assets would be doing now is trying to move the salary and affect the budget.
No, sir, nobody's saying anything about that. I'm asking you the questions of what the administrator is gonna get, fifty-one thousand, six hundred and eleven plus?
I don't think we're trying to raise the salary.
His benefits, or her benefits.
We're, we're just gonna, I think, vote on to leave it what it is, or, or...
Yes.
There, there'll be some different job description.
Well, when, when y'all said discuss, you're not gonna, we're assuming, you didn't say this, we're assuming that you're wanting to raise the pay, not cut it or keep it the same. I don't understand the questions now.
No, what I'm asking is, if we're gonna advertise and all of this, what is fifty-one thousand, and then with the benefits and stuff, so we can put it correctly in where we're advertising for an administrator at? You understand what I'm saying?
I don't know why we need to come to Commissioners Court for that. You could call my office, and I can give you the information.
Yes, it's all connected.
Can I speak to this? So I, I think it's, I, I think it's not fair, this is my personal opinion, for a non-elected person to make more than the county judge, or the sheriff, or the county attorney, who are the countywide employees. It's unfair for the administrator of a, of a department to make more than the highest-paid elected official. That's not the way this should be done. There's no reason for that person to make more than the judge, or the county attorney, or the sheriff, who are the three countywide employees.
Thank you. Rusty, you, you gave me a fact earlier. What is the average pay for paramedics in the state of Texas? It was thirty-five thousand and something?
Little thirty-five thousand.
But that's not an administrator.
And we are paying about fifty-five?
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one? Okay.
Plus benefits, yes.
Yeah, plus benefits.
And there are a lot of administrators get paid a lot more than that, in our smaller communities also.
I wouldn't deny that.
Yeah.
I'm just, my statement was really clear, the average pay is thirty-five thousand dollars in the state of Texas for a paramedic, so...
But not administrative.
I'm sorry?
Not administrative.
Okay.
Can I get my three minutes in?
Not now, you don't, no.
Sir?
Three minutes? No, public comments over, Mr. Creach.
I have a comment then. What's interesting is, I don't know where you're getting your information, that's forty, thirty-five thousand dollars a year. Interesting is, man, I got to use Goliad County EMS about three weeks ago. I went in that small little trailer because I was having PSVT, which is serious. The good news is, I'm here today because I was taken care of. You guys are squandering about where they're having to stay, and now we're on how much we should be paying these guys. What's interesting is, I just left Levocca County today just to congratulate what they've done with their county. They're no longer what we call the lower entity as far as public care. Their director, and once again, I'm not expecting anything like that here, but they're, they offered their director seventy-two thousand dollars. The assistant director is making sixty-four thousand. You guys were talking about the average pay of the paramedic that we have for twenty-four, forty-eight. I'd like to see you go out, and I'll be glad to bring the better information in as far as what the average pay on the paramedic. But you, once again, is you gotta be very careful, you're not what you're gonna get for fifty-one thousand.
What was the name, hang on just a second? What was the name of that?
ZipRecruiter.
ZipRecruiter, that, okay. So they, that's who goes out for a lot, and that's what they're reporting. Am I saying that it's gospel? No, sir, I'm not. It's the only viable information I have. And what I would further say is this.
Yes, sir.
When you come in and you, and you say, "We would like to get more money for this or for that," it's always important for us to see what everyone else is doing, rather than just picking a number.
Yes, sir. Well, and...
And I'm not disputing...
Oh, no.
Do I think seventy thousand dollars is too much? No.
Nope.
Do I think that what Sheriff Brumby said is probably correct? Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying.
Well, you know, that's the good part, everybody has an opinion, but one of the things you're looking for, when we start looking at the administrator, you're looking for some guidance, you're looking for experience, you're looking for an education. I'm not belittling the sheriff's opportunities or whatever. Sheriff is the sheriff, police are police, EMS is EMS. But once again, is we're looking for quality people to work here, and you're gonna want a quality person, because you know what people like? And Judge, you get that one. If you respect who's leading you, they'll follow you anywhere you wanna go. And I see that out in this, in this courtroom, as far as some of the people that support you. And so that's what we're wanting, is as far as an EMS administrator, pay a decent rate, and we'll get a decent administrator. But I'll be glad to get you what the average of paramedic makes in the state of Texas.
We'd like to have that information.
Not a problem.
I checked, I checked with the, the director of Calhoun County.
Yeah.
Several months ago.
Yeah.
And he told me that the average paramedic makes fifty-five thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
That's what he said.
Yeah, but we're on the forty-eight ninety-six, which is the majority of the people in the EMS industry has gone to. You, you get the idea as far as what they get on the overtime and stuff, but the one thing you don't think about is here John Creach leaves town for forty-eight hours. He's willing to go away from his wife to, to support the citizens of Goliad County, wherever he's at, and so, once again, these guys gotta be compensated, especially their families, because of what they've left behind. It's just like anything else, if something happens, they probably can't go back in a hurry. But, but if you'll look, and I'll be glad to get you that information, I'm here to help guys, I'm not, I, I'm an advocate. I'm an advocate for Goliad County. We need to save money, but we need to get the very best, and I will work on getting you the average salary for a paramedic.
Information is power, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yes, all I'm doing, all we're trying to do here is get it straight to start advertising for the amount of money that's in the budget, okay? That's, that's just the opinion.
I don't think we were trying to raise it.
No.
We're...
The Google deal says EMS administrator annual salary in the state of Texas, forty-eight thousand, eighty-five dollars.
That's information.
It's information, that's Google too.
Well...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Judge, I think what they wanna do here is, you know, advertise for the position, and we wanna get a starting salary along with benefits or whatever they're gonna get. If we wanna, do we wanna start at what was previously paid to the previous administrator?
That's all that's in the budget right now.
And that's all that's budgeted anyway. We're not, I don't think they're, they're not asking for a raise or...
We're not asking for a raise, we're just to clarify the, the, the pay.
Okay, the pay is fifty-one thousand right now.
Right, that's, yeah.
So let's throw a hook in the water and see what we come out with.
Right, that's what, that's all we're clarifying is...
Fifty-one, six, eleven, what is it?
Yes.
Yeah, so we, that's all we're wanting to do, a motion, and, and to, to, so everybody knows what the salary is, and everybody's on board.
Okay, so as far as what we need to do on item number seven?
It's just information.
Mr. Creach has told us that he's gonna bring us a bunch of information, hopefully a long time before the next meeting. We're gonna find out what the competition looks like, and we will go out accordingly.
Well, I think we oughta just put, the reason we brought this is to clarify that the, the salary, the starting salary was the fifty-one thousand plus.
It's there.
It's already a budget.
Yes.
I know that, but we're, we're, we're lining up, we have several agenda items to line up to get this out and open so we can publish this and get an administrator, so...
Well, if you're gonna bring more numbers, then...
Well, for now, it's fifty-one thousand, some change plus benefits.
And also, sir, we lost two people to Calhoun County, just because they're gonna ma, be making a lot more overtime than what they did here. And one was not even three weeks here.
So, so I, I'd like to make a motion to, to, to leave the starting salary for the EMS administrator at the fifty-one...
Fifty-one, fifty-one, six, one, one, point, zero, zero.
Okay. That's all we're doing here.
Anyone have a second for Mr. Bruins?
We're, we're, we're putting it out there.
So that everybody knows.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Ah.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries.
All right, so I was talking fifty-one, six, eleven.
Number eight?
That'd be number seven.
Discussion action to advertise for a new EMS administrator.
Discussion.
Opening and closing dates. Commissioner Bruins?
Number seven was the, uh...
Seven, we skipped...
The job description.
Seven. Job description. There again, we're, um...
We have a job description.
Yes, but...
Dr. McNeil had made two changes in it.
Did you bring it?
She put it with the, did you put that with the?
No, Robin, y'all had it. I don't think that, the final one has not, because that's coming up here to be there. We would like that whoever's the new EMS administrator to live in Goliad County, and we feel that y'all are the ones to make that choice. And, uh, Dr. McNeil feels that if we have a strong, I'm not taking the position, okay? Dr. McNeil feels that if we have a strong EMT or EMT advance, that they could apply also, but we were wanting to aim for a paramedic. Because then, when they're calling in the middle of the night, when they have to handle a disaster, whatever, discuss medications, drugs, you have a question because a patient has turned sour on you, you call the administrator, and we go from there, if you cannot reach the medical director. So in turn, uh, that's why he wanted, you know, that's why, if, if y'all feel, I feel like they should live here. And I feel that a paramedic, they can respond, and that can be any person on the totem pole. I cannot do what a paramedic does, so it's very hard for me to cover for a paramedic. And since I've been there, we've already had two times that we were gonna tell the state, "Hey, we can't do this because we don't have a paramedic," and I said, "No." So while somebody else is out on COVID right now, you are gonna see more overtime because we have that paramedic there. And believe me, if somebody's been listening, the last two weeks, we needed a paramedic on every truck.
And then there was one more, the teaching certificate.
Yes, he's not real worried about a teaching certificate, because you can now go underneath a college or somewhere else, but he wants that person to be able to get more teaching in here.
So we all go and trust Dr. McNeil, and if you would bring his recommendations in, we can modify the, the job description.
And that's what we're doing here, so that you know what it is, and then if you feel like that person should live in Goliad County.
You need to get a copy of what he had.
I thought he said...
And get it to HR so that they can produce a new job description, so that Commissioners Court can approve it.
Okay.
Because right now, we don't know what that looks like.
I really thought you were putting all this with the packet, I'm sorry.
Okay. Number eight, discussion and action to advertise for new EMS administrator, opening and closing dates.
Yes.
Most of them are three weeks that I've ever been on where you post it, you post it for three weeks. And you can't take up, uh, do anything until after the three weeks, and then you can interview whoever applied, because you have to leave it open for three weeks, as on any public job I've ever been on.
So we wanna get the best we can get for our money, so I'd do it at least three weeks, maybe a month. I mean, let's get some people out there.
Okay, and we've got Indeed, uh, I don't know how much the local newspaper was charged for ad, but in the past, it was like two to three hundred dollars just because of the wording, and, uh, we have, we can advertise it with state, we can advertise it on the county website, uh, and then some people have already been interested because they've know that I'm not gonna do it.
So we will, when we get the particulars of the job description, HR will write it up, and we'll bring it to court next, next go-around and get it approved, and then we'll start the advertising process. By the end of January, we should be finished with all of it. Is that acceptable to everyone?
Yeah, sooner the possible, the sooner the better.
I mean, that's, we've got...
I understand, but...
Okay. All right, so we'll take no action on that. All the action's gonna be afterwards. We're gonna get that to the HR right away and get it written up and float it to the Commissioners Court.
And, yeah, the next one too, so...
Number nine, discussion and action on forming an interview panel for interviewing EMS administrator applicants.
Yes, again, Dr. McNeil was in this, uh, he would like a panel this time. We did not want, and he just did not feel like moving from inside. If we wanted to, we were gonna open it like this, and if I wanted to, he said I could have it, I don't want it. I could apply for it, I don't want it. So Dr. McNeil wants a panel, and what we are requesting, that the interview panel consists of Dr. McNeil, yourself, Commissioner Bruins, Sean Hayek, that's been with us, I guess, like fifteen years, and myself. And once these applicants come in, we can either weed some out like that, or we can just bring them all in and interview them. And we'll just have to set a good day for Dr. McNeil. And, uh, he's willing to come in, and he really wants to be in this one this time.
Okay, I, uh, well, that... Okay, I uh, well, that interview panelists down the line.
Yes.
I talked to Alicia today, Ms. Crowley, and she is on board with helping with this, as is Dr. Fuller, and uh, Ms. Edwards as well, Gladys.
Gladys.
As well. So there's three experienced trauma-type individuals that have some, have more experience than you and I in this, that may add something to this. So I would like to have, I'd like to have the A-Team doing this, because there's more to it than answering the call on the ambulance.
Yes, there is.
Scheduling is a big deal in this county.
Yeah.
It creates big dollars. So we need to, Ms. Crowley, uh, came a month and a half ago and offered her services on the scheduling, and uh, I think we need to, I think we need to run that horse.
And technically, like I told you the other day, we have technically sort of been doing like that in the weekends, and it's still doing the same thing. You you are never, never not going to have overtime in EMS. The people that are coming in Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or Saturday, Sunday, especially Saturday and Sunday, that's forty-eight hours already. If they come in Friday and Saturday, you know, from the next week, it's forty-eight hours.
Well, I'm not in a position to say one way or the other, but I will tell you this. My old man always told me that camp comes in cans. So we can get this figured out. And that's what we're gonna, we're gonna try to do that, because as you are aware, there was an article in the paper last week about the power plant. We don't know when that's going to happen, but it's going to happen, because they said so. So we need to do the best job we can, be the best stewards that we can of what we have to work with. And that's our view.
Okay, so do y'all want to take action on that, on the board? Yes.
Just a quick note. Dr. McNeil called me last week. Obviously, he hadn't talked to you. He would like me to be his representative on the process. So if you get a chance, call Dr. McNeil, and he'll tell you what his favor is. But I I talked to him on Thursday. He asked me if I'd be his representative, and I said I'd be glad to. Thank you.
I know that he is a very, very busy man. We've been just, the last time we had a meeting, he couldn't come in. We had to do it via telephone. So yes, that's probably true. And then, let's see.
So we will, uh, put our nominations up and just decide, pass them around, and we'll agree on them, and uh.
And it doesn't have to be a a five panel. It can be a seven panel, a nine panel, or.
Right. Well, so so if we're gonna, if we're gonna set all this up at the next meeting and advertise for a month, we have plenty of time to form this group. And then, I'm not trying to rush you, but I'm trying to rush you because we have a long way to go.
Okay. Well, I applaud myself for doing this again. I think I've done a damn good job, just with some little pokes here and there, but I'm doing it for this community, okay? And all I want to say, I'm Goliad County EMS proud.
Thank you, ma'am.
And and I got to add, Pat has done all of this with no extra pay. She still rides the truck on her schedule, and she's really jumped up for us on this deal, so.
And we all appreciate the work that Ms. Morales is doing.
And I believe she wants to get out of it, so that's why we're trying to go forward on this administrator.
All right. Item number ten, approval of contract professional services between Allison Bass and McGee in Goliad County. This is the other one. This is not for trials. I'm working with some people in Victoria to try to get a major facility built out near the plant. You have told me in the past, sir, that you do not do civil work, and I took you at your word. So I need to have a, an attorney that can walk us through this as we go. I spoke to him, and he said, you have to, you have to get this agreement, a retainer. There's no charge for a retainer. It's it's as you need it. And that's what this second contract is for. I'm doing the very best I can to get this other business in. We draw one point three five million dollars a year out of the coal-fired plant. We know what the drop dead date is, but we don't know what the soonest is. With the dollars that they have to spend, it could be as soon as twenty twenty-one, and it may be seven years from now. No one in this room knows what the real answer is. But we have to be prepared to make up this shortfall. These solar facilities generate three hundred and forty thousand dollars a year or so. With the second one coming online, we're still going to be four short, five short. We need, we need this large facility out there. Out near the power plant, it's got all the ingredients that a major industrial complex needs. It's got rail, fiber optic, Highway fifty-nine, water, and lots of electricity. So that's what, that's what this is for. Because our county attorney is a criminal attorney. He does not do civil. And we have some, we have some other stuff that we need to reach out for and try to recover some other funds that we don't need to go into. But I'm sure you're aware of what they are.
Okay, and the name of this big project, do we have a?
There's no names.
There's no name?
No.
And it's just a retainer agreement?
It's a retainer.
For that purpose?
For that purpose.
So any, any, anytime we we want to put this retainer into into work, in just layman terms, we, you have to, we have to, the court has to approve any expenditure?
No, this is a, this is a, we have a line item for outside legal services. There's a line item in the budget that y'all passed for outside legal services. Is it twenty thousand? How much is it? Twenty-five thousand dollars. It's nothing more than going to an attorney when we need an attorney to walk us through this.
It takes Commissioners' Court approval to engage the attorney.
I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
It takes Commissioners' Court approval to engage the attorney. That's what this contract says. It doesn't say county judge. It says Commissioners' Court hires the attorney.
That's the reason I'm here, sir.
I know it, but Mr., Commissioner Morales asked, or I mean, Commissioner Edwards asked that, before he can be engaged, he has to come to you, that issue has to come to Commissioners' Court. And I was correcting you. You said, no, you get to do it.
Let me see if I've got this straight. I just want to make sure that this is totally clear.
Right.
When these high rollers that have this, that are looking to put this facility in, they ask me a question, rather than me being able to go to that attorney and ask them for the answer, I have to wait until the next Commissioners' Court date to get permission to ask him a question?
That's what the contract says drafted by the attorney that you want to hire. That's not my language. That's his language.
They have to approve the retainer. It doesn't say they have to, I don't believe it says they have to approve it every time I want to ask him a question. This is ludicrous. I'm doing my best to get some money brought into this county, and I don't understand the, I don't understand the roadblocks at all. It's a, it's a mystery to me.
Well, maybe part of the problem is, is that you don't run the county. The county is run by Commissioners' Court.
Stop.
And they get to decide.
Mr. Paimoni, I want you to stop. I'm tired of you talking down to me. I know that I'm part of a four-member, four Commissioners' Court and the judge. I have that completely understood. Every time I get any correspondence from you, every time you speak about me in public, it's in a demeaning way. I've been the judge here for two years. I know what my duties are, sir. I'm trying to negotiate, trying to make up our shortfall. Please refrain from disrespecting the office.
I'm just pointing out that it says that a majority of those, the Commissioners' Court determines what legal issues are engaged in.
Okay.
So if you want to engage the firm, you need to let the Commissioners' Court know.
I don't. Do you want to table this? Is that what, do I need to get Mr. Bass to come? I don't know how else to be able to ask an attorney when I'm standing out in the field, to ask him a question without picking up the phone and asking. But what's your suggestion is, is I need to say, stop, guys. Let's see, second Monday, okay, in ten days, we're going to have a meeting, and I'll get back with you. Is that the way you want to do this?
But the retainer would be only for this industrial, is, I guess, is is what we're voting on.
It's for civil work.
For the, just for the, this industrial?
No, sir. We're going to have to try to recover the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we invested in light bulbs, that we're not getting a response from, from our attorney. David, he doesn't do civil work. He said that. It's not something to be ashamed of. He just doesn't do civil work. I have to have a civil attorney. We need to get our money back. These guys have given us a tail light warranty on these dang light bulbs.
Judge, just a question. Do we have to retain a retainer equipment, a retainer agreement with them, since we already engaged them?
No, that's for, that is, that is totally separate thing. He, we've engaged him for guidance, excuse me, in handling the solar project. That's what we've engaged him for. That's what the first one's for. This is a totally separate deal. If you don't want me to use Mr. Bass, pick one.
I'm, I just asked a question, dude.
Okay. So I just don't understand. This, this is all new to me. I don't know how I can go out and be the face and talk to these people and try to entice them to come to Goliad without having the ability to bring them in. Many times, these investors are not from anywhere near here. They flew in, rented a car, flew in on a private jet into Victoria. They've got a limited window for face-to-face stuff. And it's going to be tough to get it done when they walk away. What exactly is the underro, what is the underlying issue here? I'm missing something.
I just asked a question if it was, since we already got them engaged, do we have to have an agreement with them?
You have to have a separate agreement.
That's all I asked.
Okay. What's the underlying, what's the underlying issue here?
But you just, okay, what I'm getting out of this, and I haven't talked to anybody about this, I'll just write here. You want a, you want a retainer with them to talk, to ask them questions about an industrial something out at the, where the plant is.
Right.
But then, but now, now you brought in a first, for civil questions.
It's all civil. It's, everything is civil. I'm not talking to this guy. I've got a criminal attorney. I'm talking to him about civil. How else are we?
And and I agree.
How else are we going to get million-dollar investments, multi-million-dollar investments to bring their money into our county if I can't engage them? Who's going to do that?
And and I do understand where you're going. I'd just like the roof on the, the building over here. If we have to sue those, the county attun, attorney does not do that
He would fit for that also.
job. And, but, I think what he's getting at, it, you, if you, you're going to lead up to this lawsuit, right? It it's not going to happen like this week, and you sue them today, tomorrow, right? So what I think what he's talking about is, if you have decided to, uh, that the process has not been working, and you're going to have to file a civil suit against somebody like this roofing company, we're going to have to, then uh, uh, or the lighting company, the way company, then, then, I guess, yeah, you want, bring it to court and say, hey, we're, we're going to file a suit on these people.
When we go to, when we go to sue them, that would be an absolute decision that this court makes.
Yeah, okay.
It's not like I can engage.
Right. Yeah, okay.
A civil attorney to sue someone.
And I, I'm good with that, yeah.
But it's all-inclusive. It's civil work. We do not have a civil attorney. And there's a bunch on the horizon. And the power plant telling us that they're going to wave bye-bye here pretty soon, whatever that year is, that accelerates and puts more emphasis on us being able to get people in here. That's my whole focus. We have to be able to draw the flies and keep them here.
I agree.
Judge, before you start hollering at me, uh, the first paragraph on services of attorney on number one, it it goes through this, and it says, pertaining to legal issues regarding general counsel, the, they have to be requested by the client to the, as a, for, through a majority vote of the Commissioners' Court. And it goes on to say, any negotiations, legal proceedings, or trials, appeals, that may be required for resolution of such matters. Well, when it comes to trials and appeals, I'm sure our county attorney can handle that part.
Not on civil matters? He's shaking his head no.
He can't.
Well, it's still, to me, the, and the way I read it, though, the way he's written this, it's still got to come to court for, for permission to do it.
Absolutely, to sue one, to sue someone. Absolutely. But if this man is not on retainer or some attorney, you don't even know what your options are until you speak to an attorney. And he's already told me, I'm not going to talk to you until we have a retainer agreement put together. And he sent this to me, and I'm now trying to get y'all. It just puts us in a position to be able to ask about civil matters. Nothing more.
Okay. I make a motion, we approve this.
Retainer.
Retainer.
Retainer that you want to do. Well, we got to have a lawyer who handles civil matters. If he doesn't do it, we got to have him. And if we got several issues coming up, we need him. So common sense, let's approve this retainer and get him on board.
We got four hundred, whatever, thirty-five thousand dollars in these light bulbs. The people will not talk to us. Fifty in the roof, twenty-five in the roof, I don't know what the number is, but we're approaching a half million dollars. We have to get an attorney on board to handle these matters for us. Writing a letter did not work.
Yeah, they never accepted any of them.
So we have to tighten the screws.
There's a motion.
And I absolutely cannot obligate Goliad County to jump in a lawsuit without Commissioners' Court. That'd be ludicrous.
Right. No, yeah, we have to, we have to agree.
We have a motion on the table to prove it. Need a second if we're going to get it?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. More recognition. What is that?
Do what?
We have a, we need to approve the resolution designating January twenty twenty-one as school board recognition month in Goliad County. Do y'all want me to read the resolution? Do I need to?
Not for my part. I mean, we can all read.
Man, I make a motion, let's approve it.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sheriff Lake Boyd?
Yep.
Approval of proposed change to the pay structure for the Goliad County Sheriff's Office. Don't be scared. We just control your pay.
My only question is, do we want to have this in open court, or do we want to have this in closed session?
And I make a motion that we move to, uh, yeah, executive session to go over this.
Well, I'll tell you what we'll, let's do then. Let's finish the rest of it in respect for the people that are out here, and then we can circle back to that one.
I agree. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Schultz, discuss and takes action on the distribution of county funds to all Goliad volunteer fire. Discuss and takes action on the distribution of county funds to all Goliad volunteer fire departments?
Good evening. The last time we had met on this, the discussion was to take the issue of the division of the money that the county's providing to the volunteer fire departments within Goliad County. That's all the volunteer department were, including the cities of our department. So, there were two meetings that were held between the chiefs of the county fire departments and the presidents of those departments. They met twice. They discussed in the first meeting, which I ran the meeting so they wouldn't get any fights. They discussed the division of the money specifically to the amount of money that they have been getting in the past. Now, in the past, I believe we, the fire, it ranged from 9,000 to 10,005. I believe it's the way it ranged throughout the years. The money was given in the first place to cover the expenses for the fuel. Well, uh, fuel's gone up enough to where it covers a little bit of the expense for the fuel and not enough to cover their insurance on their fire department. So, the chiefs voted to have another meeting to go back and look at this as to what the city fire department, the volunteer fire department was doing. So, they got together again and decided that the city fire department, the volunteer fire department, is covering from, I believe it's Charco, all the way around to 183 is their primary agreed-on designation. That's, that's twice the area of any volunteer fire department in Goliad County. So, they looked at that. Now, Chief Alonso, you're, you've been out there a long time. You cover a lot more than just cover that part of the county. You go to a lot of accidents in the county. And what they have asked the commissioner's court to do is to divide up the county into six parts instead of five and give two parts of the money to the city volunteer fire department and one part to each of the volunteer fire departments in the county. So, I believe it was $78,000 that was in the budget?
Eighty-seven thousand.
Eighty-seven thousand dollars in the budget. And divide that by six and the city volunteer fire department will get two parts and each other volunteer fire department will get one part. Do you have any questions? I have one president here tonight, the other one couldn't make it that I thought I got a hold of. Oh, I didn't know you was here. Yes, sir. Do you have any questions for the commissioners?
Hang on, Matt, this is not doing us any good here. Go ahead.
Yes, I talked to Russ and everything's okay with the Weasatch Fire Department, Andrew Weiser Fire Department, Schrader Fire Department, and Fannin Fire Department, which is represented by the president here and the president of Schrader and the vice president of Schrader. So, it's up to the commissioner's court, but since this is a countywide decision on the support, it's been a very hard year for Goliad County fire departments to raise money. Uh, in fact, uh, it's been very difficult. Their budgets to just maintain their operations. Mr. Petru, could you answer that? Come here a minute. Mr. Petru is the president for the Schrader Fire Department. Just the operating expenses with insurance and fuel.
Best I remember, the insurance is running about $11,000 just for liability and, and, uh, you know, the insurance on the trucks, uh, the buildings and things like that. Uh, fuel is always extra, depends on how many calls we answer, uh, how far we have to drive. We do answer quite, quite a few calls to, to assist, uh, on, on any of the countywide, uh, calls, no matter where they are. It's a 40-minute drive for us just about from Schrader out to Berkler. And you take that big 3,000 gallon tanker, it doesn't give very good fuel mileage, so. But we have to fill it up if we go all the way down there and all the way back. And, uh, it's just one of the things we have to deal with.
Does, does your insurance cover any accident, um?
Yes.
Personnel?
Yes, it, all of the firemen that drive are on the insurance policy. All of them, they have to be. Only those people can drive the vehicles, nobody else.
And, and y'all have your insurance through like a forestry insurance?
No, it, it's through Jacobs Weber.
And I think we had talked about this at, at your last deal is to help on the insurance. If the county can, uh, or TAC could insure any of this and?
No, sir.
No, okay.
They're 501(c)(3) and you can't do that.
Okay, that's, oh.
You can donate money to them like you're doing, giving them money to operate, but they can't be, they have to be standalone.
So, you got 88,000 to split between six of you.
Eighty-seven, eighty-seven thousand?
Eighty-seven thousand's what's budgeted, yes.
Split, divided by six.
And then, the city gets two parts.
Fourteen-five, so, city gets two parts.
Twenty-nine-three, so, city get twenty-nine-three and others get fourteen-five.
You know, the, uh, volunteer fire departments, they, their operations are about 20 to 25,000 dollars to stay active. They raised, Schrader raised almost six.
Andy's having a few problems, just hang on just a second. Live TV.
Technology.
Andy, if you're not gonna be able to do that, we can get Vicki just to bring her recorder up and hope it does it. I'm doing the right thing. No good? We're up? Okay.
I think I was discussing the operation expenses for each fire department. Like, Schrader Fire Department had a gun raffle, they raised what?
We cleared after expenses about 7,000, which is about a third of what we would've made if we'd had our big fundraiser, which we elected not to do this year because of COVID.
And all the fire departments are affected like that this year. I know Andrew Weiser's same thing, very little money coming in. Everybody's having a raffle. Everybody's having a gun raffle or this raffle, so it's difficult to raise money. So, what, what we're asking is, I'm just a mediator, remember that. I don't benefit from anything. So, if you have a question that you need to ask it now of the president or myself.
I have a question for you, Mr. Schultz. I was not invited or privy to these meetings that y'all had. And I am the fire chief of Goliad VFD and I do cover the county. So, I was not asked to attend the meetings or?
In the last meeting, you'll understand that Alonso Morales, as a commissioner and fire chief, was to set up the meetings and have them called. You said you'd do it.
You set them up, you didn't give me a call, why not?
You were supposed to set them up. It never took place. The fire departments contacted me and said, "Can we get together?" Because we know what's going on. You would've been very well invited if you would've told me. But it seemed at the time you were supposed to do it and I did it for you. Or for the county.
That's okay. My second question I would like to share, the financial officer from the city.
She's gonna get a step in.
To, to step in and explain our side of it.
Yes, ma'am.
I gave everybody a, um...
Talk closer to my...
The budget from last year for the fire department, Goliad Volunteer Fire Department. The total that the city spent last year was 342,462 dollars and 86 cents. That does include the fire truck for 229,943.66. Our fuel that we paid for the fire department, gas and all, was 5,616 dollars. The insurance is 5,391 dollars. The insurance, I mean, the license for the tower that we have to have is 62.75, 6,275 dollars. And then we have the salaries at the end of the year, where we pay the men for their, their runs and for their meetings and for their training. And of course, the social security, the workers' comp, the utilities, the telephone. Telephone by itself was 7,964 dollars and 49 cents. And you have their supplies, 13,473.85. And they have the repairs, equipment repairs, the vehicle repairs. It's all on your spreadsheets. And then, for the last year, from October 2019 to, uh, September of 2020, the runs that the volunteer fire department, they ran 162, they had 162 runs. The city, they had 25 runs in the city and 137 in the county. So, I wanted everybody to be aware how much we do work in the county. And all the expenses that have occurred before you make your decision. Or to help you make your decision.
I think we're at a spot where we have more fires than we have dollars. And, uh, I certainly understand the plight of the, the VFDs out in the county. They're wholly dependent on donations, completely dependent. And no one will ever accuse Alonso of not doing his share. It's a bunch of, it's a bunch of, it's a group of good people that are trying to do the right thing. And there aren't enough dollars to go around to meet everybody's taste buds.
Judge?
It just doesn't, it doesn't work out. That brings up a question, okay, and I, I believe we've asked this before. I mean, somebody has a fire, they bound to have insurance on whatever, or accidents. Wha, how can we?
Recover that money?
Recover some of that out of insurance?
That's a good question. I have to get an attorney to kinda get in on that because I don't have any idea.
Because I think we have talked about that, you know, why, why we don't charge. Oh my God, a house fire, there's, there's insurance usually. And, uh, there's, there's gotta be something in the insurance policy. I don't know if anybody in here does insurance.
I, I wanna say one thing, Alonso. There's not a man around here that would stand up next to you against me. I have always known you to do everything you can for this county and the fire department. There's no one person in this county that has done as much as you. I'm never gonna say anything against you on that. What we're saying here is, you get your electric bill paid. This fire department pays 1,100 dollars a year just for electricity, minimum. You don't have to pay it, okay? You get your expenses, you got a place, your insurance is paid by the city, right? Okay, the county doesn't pay that fire department in Schrader except one, one allocation a year. They have to raise everything else, their computer. Do you know how much it costs for a transmission on a Mack truck? Give me a guess. We have one that's out right now. How much you think it's gonna cost for that one pump back there? $25,000. These guys have to raise it. Nobody hands it to them. Now, I understand Alonso needs to get his fair share, fair share. He makes a lot of runs, he does. I've been out there with him a lot of times. But these guys also make runs. They need to have a fair share. That's all the fire departments have asked me to do, is present and ask for a fair division of it. We don't, you know?
Sir?
This year, right now, I couldn't tell you, you know, I'd have to, I'd have to go back and run some, run some numbers.
We use our membership and, uh, out to Schrader and the, the money to come up with it. I think they have 125, 30.
Membership's not much. I mean, it's 20 dollars a year. We, we make, we get, we bring in about 1,600 dollars a year for the membership.
Can you do one fundraiser a year?
One fundraiser a year, that's it.
Does Goliad do any fundraising?
We have, yes, sir.
It's kind of a off-and-on thing or is it the annual thing or?
Off-and-on.
You know, I, I, I agree with Alonso. Alonso does a lot. That fire department is excellently trained and manned. These volunteer fire departments have to pay for their own training. They do get grants back every once in a while, yes, that works on them. They get a grant for a truck. But there is also a balance on that truck for, it costs 200,000, you gotta pay 40,000 out of your budget. So, that's all I wanted to do, was to present the fire departments what they would like to do, be equal in the division, divided up, give the Goliad City Volunteer Fire Department. It's up to you, gentlemen.
It is, but again, like I said, you know, I feel left out because you didn't invite me, even though.
I apologize for that, Alonso, you know me better than that.
I could've helped you with that.
You know me better than that.
Well, I, I didn't get, no, get invited.
Well, I, you said I could do it and you'd, I'd take care of it. I didn't want to hang do it, you said, "Go take care of it." And you know what? I did.
I, I personally don't wanna make this decision for y'all. I, I think if y'all, maybe have one more meeting with everybody, all of your presidents or chiefs and see if y'all can work this out without us making this.
How do you want us to work it out?
I don't know.
How do you want them to work it out? Not me, I don't get a nickel out of it.
I, I just would like.
My, my understanding is that it's up to y'all to allocate the funds.
It is, you know, and we're, we're trying to pick and choose here when the ultimate goal is to have a fire wagon show up to every fire. That's what, that's the, that's the ultimate goal. I'm not looking to cut, I'm sure David didn't, or Mickey, we're not looking to cut dollars from one person and give it all to Alonso or vice versa. We want those fire wagons to roll every time that there's a fire.
I think David has a good idea, maybe we could sit down one more time and bring in Alonso and let him run the meeting. I'll just sit there and watch, okay? I just wanna be interested in it. Because I am the vice president of Schrader, that's the only interest I get there. I don't make a runs with them anymore. I'm not allowed to really go run with them anymore.
And I make a motion, we take no action until Alonso and y'all have this one meeting and we'll be done.
I'll get with you, Alonso.
Are you good with that, Alonso?
I'm good with it.
Okay.
We'll take no action on this?
Thank you.
Well, we'll be seeing it again, I'm sure.
And please come up with something.
Yeah, make it easy on us, would you?
I don't wanna do that.
Andy? Approval? Approved proposal for permanent restoration of fire optic cable, fiber optic cable from the library at a junction at Market Street, right on the corner in front of Steve Kennedy's office. The city was doing some improvements over here on, on the Fannin. And the backhoe bucket found the fiber optic line, knocked us out for close to a day. And it was a temporary fix. They have, December the 23rd, they've made that date available to us. We're off that date.
Bless you.
And we're looking for approval to move forward with pulling permanent cable in. Andy, go ahead.
So, the judge pretty much explained it. They did a quick, uh, temporary fix, they replaced about 400 feet. Uh, what happened was the track hose snagged it, pulled the slack out of the loop and then eventually broke it in a pull box behind the library. So, what they did was they back-pulled to a handhole on the south side of Fannin Street, I guess. And they spliced it there and spliced it at the handhole at the library. So, it's up and running, but when they pulled it, they also put a micro kink in the fiber, which is, uh, they had two pieces, a duck came up, they pulled all the slack and it made a very sharp bend under a lot of pressure. They ran a scope through it, it's passing traffic, but it does have a little bit of an anomaly in there. Said it, it can work. Said it, it can work, it could be intermittent, it could die, um, altogether. So what I'd like to do is have them replace from the hand hole across from JP two, all the way back to the library and get rid of the splices. Uh, basically put it back the way it was before it was broken. It's, it's a minimal, it's a minimal charge to replace the whole piece of fiber versus just replacing the six hundred and fifty feet. If they were to go from where the new splice is back to that hand hole and get rid of the micro kink. It's about a thousand dollars difference. And the way I look at it is, I'd like to reduce any potential points of failure. I'd like to put it back to one contiguous piece of fiber. So the.
That's the only way to go, myself, fiber optics.
Yeah, the, the, the two proposals aren't that far apart. There's not a whole lot more for, for doing twelve hundred feet versus replacing six hundred and fifty feet. And, and that would put us back to, to new fiber where, where we were before they broke it.
So your recommendation is we take the seventy-four?
Seventy-four fifty, yes, sir. And also one other thing to think about. Les Richter with, uh, VCS was one of the original contractors that put this fiber in. So he's pretty familiar with it. One thing he asked me was, did we want that ducting proofed? And I said, what do you mean? And he said, we want to make sure that that old fiber is, is going to, they want to use, they want to cut the old fiber and use it as a pull string to pull the new one through. But he said, over time, those ducts can close up, uh, with either dirt or water or, or what have you. And they can be obstructions and we don't want to run into that. We don't want to find that out after the fact. So what they, what they proposed was, um, they use a, a big compressor and they basically put it in the ducting and they, they blow anything out of it. And we did try, there is pull tape in, in the ducting. Brian and I got on it last week and tried pulling from both ends and all it does is it stretches about a foot and then it just pops right back to where it was. So there's, I don't know how it happened or what caused it, but there's some obstruction in there where it's, it's not free. So my concern is they cut the fiber, they start pulling new one in and they can't get it all the way through. And then we've got to go back and worry about trying to clear out the ducting. So the proofing is dependent on how long it takes them. It's basically a separate time of material type thing. Uh, his guesstimate was five, five hundred bucks if it goes smoothly and it could go up to a thousand or twelve hundred. And that would be in addition to the other. But I kind of would like to have that done because when you cut the fiber, it takes them hours to splice all the strands back. So they've got to do splicing on both ends. And this is, even if they do some of the work on the Tuesday evening prior to that, they're going to be there all day Wednesday pulling that. So I don't know about y'all, but I'd prefer not to be up for Christmas Eve working on that. So I, I'd kind of like to have as much done beforehand as we can. And just to ensure that the job's going to go smoothly.
Does this include putting the tracer wire?
It does. The, the tracer wire is not mentioned in there, but I have a separate email where he states that it's not in the quote, but it is included. The tracer wire is for locating the fiber after, uh, it's installed so they can put a, they can put a tone generator on or a signal generator and then be able to go back and pick it up and mark it. It currently does not have that, uh, that marker in there.
If we'd had the marker in there.
We could have had it marked.
Week and a half ago, we wouldn't be having this discussion right now. So it allows you to call no dig and find it. And this cable goes all the way to the old hospital and to the school.
There's, there's multiple fibers, uh, between, uh, comes out of that hand hole behind the library, it goes to Franklin Street. One of them goes over to the school. One of them, the one they cut comes out and feeds the courthouse and Market Street. That's, that's another project I'm working on. I'm trying to get everything marked and get that submitted to Texas eight-one-one. Nothing's registered. This is all old, uh, fiber back from the Goliad Community Network that was about from two thousand or two thousand and two. It's, it's just never been marked. The city has no record of it, as far as I know. From, from talking to, uh, Earl. I've, I've met with him a couple of times. He had no idea there was fiber there.
Thank you, Andy. So what's your pleasure?
And, and the funds are going to come out of your budget or where?
No, I don't have this budgeted.
So we're good?
Probably come out of buildings and yards. It could actually, it's, it's, it is an emergency. Nobody knew the backhoe operator was going to pull the fiber optic. But it's something that we can't not do because.
I understand that. I'm just asking, I'm just asking a question. I would recommend we get it out of uncommitted.
So if I could get a motion to approve the, uh, the proofing?
The, the permanent repair and, and I would also recommend that we do the proofing. Hopefully we can try to get that done this week. Like I said, it's, it's a time of material. I'm hoping it doesn't run over another thousand, but I, I really think it's something we probably should try to have them do.
I agree. You need to clean it out before you go shoot the new one in there.
Sure. Need a motion.
I make the motion. We approve it with, with the, uh, cushion.
And the funds will come out of contingent and uncommitted?
It'll come out of buildings and yards or contingent uncommitted one?
I would say contingent and uncommitted.
Contingent and uncommitted. There we go. Need a second.
Need a second on that?
Yeah, I'll second it.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Discussion action on repairs to Vicki Quinn's vehicle, which was damaged while conducting county business picking up election equipment following the general election. Commissioner Bruins?
Yeah, Vicki came to me. She, uh, she damaged her vehicle while using it to, uh, haul the voting, uh, equipment back and forth. Um, we contacted, I think Rusty contacted TAC and, uh, it won't pay for any of those repairs, correct? Okay. 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 Anyway, I told her I'd bring it to court and we'd discuss it and, and, uh, vote either to fix it or. She, uh, she has insurance, but she's afraid her insurance is going to really climb on her. She's already checked with her, uh, insurance actually. And they said it would affect her, um, premiums next go around.
How much is it?
She has three, um, um, estimates. Uh, one of them is a collision center for two thousand and seventy-seven dollars. Pro collision came out at thirty-three hundred, ten dollars and Atzenhofer thirty-eight hundred and twenty-six dollars.
You have a motion to offer?
Yeah, I guess, I'd, I'd guess I'll make a motion that I guess we go with the, a lower bid if it's okay with Vicki to go with the lower bid. We, but with this, we, we got to get a fix. We either need to start renting a vehicle. Um, I guess to, to, uh, I, I asked her about a pickup, you know, we had pickups at the yards and, uh, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry. I, I know that and I do understand that.
Yeah, we're setting the precedent, that's right.
I, I took it that TAC didn't cover it at all. That's, that's, though they. That's what, okay. Well, that's, okay. I just took it that TAC didn't have this at all, that they would never insure.
Need a second on Commissioner Bruins, please?
Uh, Vicki was here. She still here, she's gone.
Yeah.
I don't know if she wants to add anything to it.
Did you have something to add, Vicki? This does include a complimentary defensive driving course also.
Okay. If you, and you're welcome to check my driving record. It's clean. I, I don't make a habit of doing this. Um, I've been working elections for like thirteen years. This is the first time I've ever had this happen. Using my own personal vehicle. And I've learned and Rusty's learned. If you're a county employee and you are using your personal vehicle and you have an accident, it's on you. And I checked with my insurance agent because I was doing county business. They would have to change my vehicle classification to commercial. Which would raise my, uh, premiums quite a bit. So I'm just asking for a little bit of help here.
I think we're going to do that for you. I need a second, please.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Vicki.
But we, we will work on a fix for this so it doesn't happen again, so.
The last one. Discussion action to approve adding Goliad County Appraisal District employees to the Goliad County Medical Insurance. I'm confused.
Okay. Well, I think Rita, you want to explain it?
We are in the process of breaking away from the school district. The appraisal district is, uh, like tied in with the school. We kind of write off them. We have insurance from them and everything. And so we're, we're planning on breaking away. I thought it's going to be quicker than it is. Now we're kind of on, we're just trying to get all our ducks in a row to find out the most cost-effective way to do this. And so right now, we're still really riding with the school. I just wanted to see if that option would be available. When I talked to, uh, to Mr. Howard, he had said that I would need county commissioner approval to be able to use y'all's health insurance.
Who's going to handle your payroll for you?
We will. We have QuickBooks program that we can do all that with. So it would really only just be the insurance.
And they're not asking us to pay for it?
No, we're not. Just to be able to use, to jump onto y'all's block or whatever you call it, your group.
One thing I'd like to suggest if we, if we decide to do this is they pay a yearly upfront, so we're not having to deal with the monthly bill to you. Because you should have your insurance budgeted. So you should just write a check straight across the board to it rather than us having to handle it every month or every paycheck. I don't know if you'll pay every month or every two weeks or whatever.
Well, I think we would do that internally as far as the insurance goes and then we could, we, I think it would be easier to pay you monthly because then we would know. I mean, if not, you had said that if we paid it yearly.
But what I'm saying is you pay up the insurance upfront for the whole year because that's just another deal we have to keep up with. But if we have to do it just once a year, then it's not a big deal.
It doesn't matter.
So I think what he's.
Right now, I just want permission.
I think what he's saying is if, if we have to pay the money out of pocket, that would include your three employees?
Four.
Including four?
Mm-hmm.
So we would be out that money and it would just be a real clean deal. As when, when renewal time comes, he, he'll tell you to the penny what your one-year term is going to be.
Okay.
And you simply write a check for it and that way there's no invoicing, billing, hey, how come they didn't pay us this month? None of that.
Right.
It's just, it's just a really clean deal, so.
Okay, and that's, I just, and I'm not sure that I'm even going to use it at this point. I just wanted to have that option available if it was.
Okay.
And, and the other deal was if they had a personnel change in, in the middle of the year, that, I think that's why they wanted to stay either monthly or quarterly.
Just be, I mean, it, it doesn't matter.
It works just like a car insurance. If you have somebody covered and they've got six months left, that insurance company is going to reimburse you your six months.
Okay, like I said, I just wanted to know if we had that option.
All right.
So I think, well, you want to motion to?
Sure.
If, if they ask us to, uh, join in our insurance group?
I did have one question.
Go ahead.
Why in the school district doing this?
She, she brought it up to the, the school too. She's just trying to find the cheaper of the two. Or the best deal for the appraisal district. That's what, that's what this is about, right?
Right.
Right. They're, they're probably going to rent the office that they're in now from the school district. They.
We're tied, we're kind of in with the school. Since we're kind of under the school umbrella right now, we're using their buildings. We don't have to pay anything. For the building insurance or anything. But what, well, we're probably, if we do anything, we'll lease a building from them at this point. I personally would like to get closer to the, the county tax office just for the taxpayers. Uh, convenience, but that's down the road.
So you're saying that the appraisal board could go directly to TAC and we would be out of the mix completely? What's it going to take to confirm that? Because that's the cleanest way yet.
Well, that was another thing we did mention in the meeting today was them going out for their own insurance too. They're just looking for.
I understand.
Oh.
I understand.
And we, we know ours is high because every, our average age, I know, is sixty plus in the county, so.
So my preference, just me, I would, I would prefer that you buy your own insurance from TAC if, if the auditor can get that set up. Otherwise, I think we're of a mind to do it for you, but it would be a cleaner deal. That way you wouldn't have any, you wouldn't be riding on us and you would have that independence.
Right, like I said, I just, I didn't know if that would be an option. I, I had looked at all different kinds of ways to do it.
Either way, we're going to get you fixed up.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So if we could have a motion to approve what she's asking for? Unless she's able to go direct and get the same deal and it takes the county completely out of the mix? Did I say that totally backwards?
No, I just, I was just saying, we, Rita, you're not in a hurry to get this done. If she needs, like, if, if she can go, if the appraisal employee, district employees can go on their own through TAC, we need to find it out.
You can.
I, well, we ain't talking about rates. We're just talking about if they're going to cover them or not.
And they do have insurance now. They, they are covered. They're.
So that, my thing was, let's, just find out all the options here. And you already said that if those options don't pan out, that we could put them under our umbrella as far as the medical.
Why don't we make a motion that we will cover her with our insurance policy in the event that TAC won't do the appraisal district separately? Is that fair?
Yeah.
Yeah. Can you?
Yeah, I'll second it.
I'll make that motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Does anyone have a public announcement? Time's up. All right. We are going to adjourn into a executive session at this time. Thank you for coming.
We don't do in here or go in?
I think that we can.
I bet.